On the Board of Adjustment, he served as Vice Chair for two years. And he's actually previously been recognized for serving two additional terms on the Board of Adjustment. And he's also been involved in other committees over the years, such as the Budget Committee, Open Space Committee, and the General Plan Committee. Bill Heiner has served on the Planning Commission from January 2014 through last month. During that time, he was a representative from the Planning Commission to our Design Review Committee. And he also served as Vice Chair on that committee. In addition to that, Bill has served on the CDVG and Home Committee, and he's volunteered in other capacities, such as the Western Stampede Committee. And he is currently a member of the Board of Adjustment and will continue to be on that board. And last but not least, Dan Laws has served on the Planning Commission from January 2011 through last month. During that time of service, he's been Chair for three years and served as Vice Chair for one year. He was a representative for the Planning Commission, also on the CDVG Committee, and has been involved in the Healthy West Jordan Committee. So it's been an honor to work with these men, and they and their families have sacrificed quite a bit in building up our community. If you could join with me in recognizing and thanking them, I'd appreciate it.
We'll move now to Communications. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. A year ago, almost to the day, the mayor and I went to see the newly-elected mayor of Salt Lake City and asked for a seat on the Airport Board, in that they have an airport in our city and we've never had any representation. So a year later, after a lot of negotiations, and I think both the council members know how the negotiations took place, we were granted a seat on the Board, and we also got one for Tuilla. So the first meeting will be January 18th at 8:00. And they're usually very long agendas. Thank you.
Thanks. City Attorney?
Yes, I'm filling in for David Bricky this evening. He did want me to report on one of our employees, Luana Saisam, who just recently went from part-time to full-time as a victim advocate, and she's an excellent employee in our office. Just wanted to show appreciation for her.
Thank you. David Oka?
Yes, just to advise the council, we've been seeing a peak interest in the hospitality industry in West Jordan now. We've got, as you know, the Marriott is underway, and we have my place, and we were approached today by another hotel developer who's interested in West Jordan. So we'll bring you up to speed if that progresses any further. That's all I have. Thank you.
Frank thing?
Nothing to deny, Mayor. Thank you.
Nothing to deny, Mayor.
Jim?
And nothing from Wendell. He is apologizing for not being here. He's kind of snowed in again up at Heber. Nothing to deny.
Chief Marrow?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just to update, we had three employees retire from the Fire Department last week. Over 110 years of experience in the West Jordan Fire Department that has moved on to a new adventure. So congratulations to them. So we'll be looking to fill those three spots, and we'll also have some promotions in the next three months. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Dan?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just to let you know, our Citizens Academy, we're starting our winter session tomorrow night. You're welcome to come and attend that opening session, look at that if you so choose. Also, we've had one officer that's going to be retiring on the 15th, and then another officer that's resigning to go into the private sector, which I believe is a total of three vacancies currently. We are currently testing, so we hope that those vacancies will be filled in the very near future. Thank you.
Thank you. City Council? Councilmember Anderson?
I have nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief update, I was able to attend the Legislative Preview yesterday morning with most of you, and most of us, I should say. And it was great to see what our state legislators are working on, and that they really have our back as far as representing West Jordan as a city and as a municipality. So I wanted to say it was enlightening and informative, and I think we've got a great caliber of people representing us at the state. Thanks.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, I apologize if I don't have a graphic. I wanted to show that, but I just was provided some information in a meeting prior to this one. Just wanted to share with you all our latest snowpack that pertains directly to us, because we watch on the news that it pertains kind of the state in general. But what we do is we watch those reservoirs, those lakes that really impact us where we get our water. And our current snowpack is at 225% as of today. It's an extremely wet year, which, when you compare to other years, we're right on track with what 2011 was, which was the last good year before we had five years of drought. So we're just hoping the trend continues. Utah Lake is, which is where obviously we get a lot of the irrigation water, is extremely low at this point. So we're really looking forward to a wet year. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Hagan?
Nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I held another town hall meeting. I had attendance about 30 people there. It was wonderful. Thank you, those who came. And I see we have a couple of Boy Scout units here. I want to welcome the Boy Scouts. Thank you for joining us in the council meeting tonight.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I apologize for my voice not feeling that well. But the one item I wanted to bring up here in March, I did feel important enough to share regardless. I just wanted to give a sincere thank you to the folks from Public Works who came out on Christmas Day and spent 12 hours or more taking care of the roads so that everybody else could be getting to see their family wherever they needed to be, giving up their time with their loved ones so that residents could go be with their loved ones. And as much as I'd like, well, you know what, I think I will. I'd like to recognize each one of them. So the folks that we had that were out there, from midnight, starting about midnight, we had Jason Duffin, Lionel Smith, Austin Tim, Kyle Johansson, Zach Griffiths, Derek Carter, Shane Briggs, Bill Young, Tim Peters, and Mick Christopherson. Coming in at noon, we had John Bourne, Courtney Barney, Victor Arriano, Gary Gunnel, Devin Mansfield, Sean Martin, Zachary Rollins, Jerry Street, Ian Johnson, Scott Mortensen, and Julie Coombs. And then a special thanks is owed to a few other folks who aren't in the Streets Department but helped out anyway. We had from the Sewer Department, Justin Lancaster come in on Christmas Day. And then we also, from the Parks Department, had Kyle Bird, Kelly Diller, Kevin O'Brien, Mark Cole, Ty Nelson, and Kent Ryanhold. There are a lot of people who gave up their holiday so that the rest of us could celebrate ours safely. So I just wanted to extend a very sincere thank you to all of them, if you would pass that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. We'll move now to Citizens Comment. If you're here to speak on an item other than the public hearing items tonight, now would be your opportunity. You'll be allowed three minutes to speak on the item of your choice. Anyone wishing to speak, now would be the opportunity. Seeing no one, I will close the Citizens Comment portion of the agenda and move to the Consent Calendar. I've had no one ask for anything to be pulled from the Consent Calendar, so a motion would be in order. Councilmember Nichols, move to approve the consent item. Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Councilmember Jacob. Discussion of the motion? The vote?
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Ross?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
The vote passes. Seven in favor.
Item 7A, public hearing item, received public input and considered for approval ordinance 17-01 regarding a general plan land use map amendment for 6.25 acres from professional office to high-density residential, and rezone 6.25 acres from RR1A, rural residential one-acre lots zone, to PRDH. Planned residential development, high-density. Zone for Ganson Carriages located approximately 8679 South Redwood Road, Oakwood Homes applicant. David?
Yes, Larry Gardner will be handling this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Originally, Oakwood Homes applied for a land use map amendment and zone change on Mr. Ganson's assembled piece of property at this location. It's ready, adjacent to Redwood Road, about 8500 South. They've since transferred that application to Alpine Homes, who have redesigned the concept. Originally, Oakwood was doing a much more dense project than what Alpine is doing. Alpine's probably trimmed two, two and a half units per acre off of this development, made more of a traditional single-family development. And so the request is to change the land use map from a professional office to high-density residential, and then rezone the property from rural residential one-acre lots to a planned residential development, high-density. And if, with your permission, Mayor, Steve Jackson from Alpine Homes is here to kind of walk you through their application, if that's okay, if you come up and present that at this time.
That would be appropriate.
Getting a quick tutorial on how the technology works here. Councilmembers, first of all, thank you for taking the time tonight. We appreciate that. Also, I wanted to briefly thank the Planning Commission. Having formally served on the Planning Commission, I know it's their job to provide direction to the city, to the city council members, and to all those involved. And so we appreciate their direction that they have actually provided in this. Previously, when we brought this forth before the Planning Commission, they forwarded a negative recommendation based on the concept that was put forth before. We took those recommendations from the Planning Commission and incorporated those into changing our concept to meet those standards of what they were saying we were not currently meeting. So we'll walk through this, and I'll kind of just explain how we've now met those requirements as we go through. So you see here, the current plan that we have calls for about 43 units. We're actually going to be moving this one off of Redwood Road to provide a little bit more open space for any future widening of the road here. But overall, we're probably going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 39 to 40 units, and we provide a little bit more open space for some amenities. I know that was one of the questions involved before was if there was going to be amenities here. So you can see, this is the updated plan versus the older plan. They had a lot of the open space pushed towards the front, and then even more so from Oakwood's plan, which had about 56 units, and they were kind of more small, higher-density units here. So just kind of a brief overview, this is the 6.25 acres directly to the east of Redwood Road at about 8660 South. And directly to the east of it here, you see there's actually existing development that's pretty similar, and then you have some multifamily duplex units down here. So the PRDH code that we are aiming for, I mean, I don't need to lecture you on the details of it, but essentially, it's designated to have a high-density between 5.6 units per acre and 10 units per acre. Our current concept comes into about 6.8 units per acre, which is on the lower end of that scale. If you compare that with the existing Dove Meadows subdivision just to the east, they're at 6.38 units per acre. So we're keeping in line with the existing residential subdivision just to the east of that. So the first point in the PRDH code that the Planning Commission said we did not meet was creating a more attractive and more desirable environment in the city. So that being said, we wanted to briefly show you what it looks like now. It's just kind of an open space, a lot of fields. And if you take it back to what we're turning it into, it's going to be much more developed community with some rooftops that will, you know, provide a little bit more infill in the area to really give that appearance of a built-out look in the city center. So that being said, I think that meets that requirement. The second point that they pointed out was that they said we did not allow for a variety of uses and structures and encourage imaginative concepts and designs in the neighborhood housing and mixed-use projects. Now, as you'll see in your packet that was handed out, there's several different elevations and different frontages that we'd be using to provide, you know, a variety of looks. They'll all kind of correspond together, so you're not having a random mix of housing plans, but at the same time, they will not all be the exact same. You're not going to have a cookie-cutter look or a townhome look of, you know, everything looking very similar. So that was the first plan, and this is the second plan, and we're finalizing a third model that we'd be putting in here as well that would have multiple different elevations. The next point that they pointed out was that they said we did not need the requirement to produce a balanced and coordinated mixture of uses and related public and private facilities. In my discussions with the city, this is more of a public and/or private facilities, as we are going to be providing some open space here for the residents to enjoy. And then we would be required to set up an HOA to maintain this open space. So, you know, that would be something we could visit a little bit further down the line about how that would get evened out and, you know, how much the public would have access to that. But this is not planned to be gated at this point, so the public would have the opportunity to come here and use this park space, but then again, you're running into the issue that if, you know, the residents here are paying an HOA fee, you know, they have the right to sort of control who has access to that. So once again, that's something we can visit a little bit later on down the line, but in putting in this open space, I believe we now meet that requirement. Point seven on the PRDH code, encourage a broad range of housing types, including owner and renter occupied units, single-family detached dwellings and multiple-family structures, as well as structural types. This one was a little bit tricky in that most of the PRD codes are calling for large, extremely large developments spanning several acres, where this is smaller. This is really serving more to supplement an infill ordinance, which the city currently doesn't have, if I'm not mistaken. So this is kind of how we fit that into there. I do believe that we're providing a broad range of housing types, but at this point, we're not having any plans to do any multifamily or rental units. It's all going to be single-family detached owner occupied. And the next point was, the code calls for encouraging and providing for open land for the general benefit of the community and public at large as places for recreation and social activity. Once again, as I showed you in the previous concept, you know, we provided that. This is another concept that we've been looking at. This is the one that originally went before the Planning Commission that has your open space here on Redwood Road. That being said, in our discussions with the city, you know, we wanted to provide you options to see that there's multiple ways that we could go with this still, and that's going to be up to the city and the council members themselves to determine, moving forward, exactly what gets put in this location. So we're willing to work with the city on that and provide something that's going to benefit everybody. So that being said, this open space here, we, you know, put some sort of amenity here, maybe some picnic gazebo or a tot lot. You know, we'll have a trail system that'll run through and connect the different roads, and then connect the community in general. So this is the other concept that we're working with that we've obviously presented in your packets, and here you have your open space, the walking trail, detention pond. We do have some updated concepts as well on this one, where both of them have now moved these lots up and provided a trail where the Dove Meadows community can now access this community and have an easier walking path to Redwood Road and be able to facilitate pedestrian use there. Here's just a couple of quick renderings of some of the amenities that we would provide in those open spaces. Some type of tot lot for children, and then, you know, something kind of a picnic gazebo, some picnic benches, some park benches, relates to beautify the area and provide a nice place for these homes once we put these in. We're getting close to the end here, but there's, the next one was encouraging and providing a development for comprehensive pedestrian circulation network separated from vehicular roadways in order to create linkages between residential areas, open spaces, recreational areas, and public facilities, thereby minimizing reliance on automobile transportation. Once again, this network of trails that we've kind of provided through here, with the one coming through the existing subdivision as well, I think meets that requirement where we would, you know, provide some sort of pedestrian walkway where it'll encourage people to get out of their cars and walk through the neighborhood. That being said, along Redwood Road here, we would be proposing putting up some type of barrier to help with that privacy. Obviously, if we went with that concept where there's open space on Redwood Road, we'd want to have some way of fencing that in. You wouldn't want a tot lot right on Redwood Road. So we'd be proposing something in the neighborhood of a six-foot wall. This would be set back probably about 10 to 20 feet off of Redwood Road with some landscaping in front of it, so, you know, it could beautify the area. And finally, the other point that the Planning Commission said that we did not meet was the, that, you know, many of the planned development zones can be best realized on large-scale developments, and development on a large scale is encouraged, but not necessarily 100% what it is every time. Once again, you'll see in your packets, and, you know, we discussed with planning staff that that comes back to the infill ordinance piece that, you know, this is the code that's traditionally been used to serve those specific purposes for unique infill pieces. So just briefly, we'll run through what it's currently zoned as and, you know, why we've been having some complications with getting this land sold to some professional office developers and commercial developers as well. So just to the south, you'll see, this is the Ganson property up here on the north, and there's some existing townhome paths, or sorry, townhome-style professional office paths. You'll look, if you go on the Salt Lake County parcel search, these are all owner-occupied professional office spaces. And you can see, they're building a few back here, but a lot of these pads have not even been purchased yet, and they've not even been built, simply due to not enough demand. It's been kind of a slow churn to get these built out. You'll see here as well, this is just to the south of this one, here's some more professional office spaces. These are the ones that have been built out, and then these are the ones that are still remaining. You still have three more pods here that haven't even been built out. Again, to the north of the Ganson property, which is down this way, you have some professional office space. Again, you know, you have about seven acres here along Redwood Road, and then even moving further west in Jordan Landing, you have over 60-plus acres of professional office space near Jordan Landing that has not been built out. So that being said, if it's not professional office space, it's the best use of that property. Given the demand, what would it be? Our argument is obviously for residential, mainly because, as you see here, traditionally in the city, commercial's done better at the major intersections at 7800 South and Redwood, 90th South and Redwood, and then the connecting streets in between, the mid-blocks, are traditionally reserved for residential developments. You can see here, this is actually a map that was pulled from the website, from West Jordan's website, and you'll see these are the different shopping centers in the city. You have three of them currently on Redwood Road, one at 70th, one at 78th, one at 90th, and Ganson's property's right here. So that being said, it would be difficult to, you know, really justify putting a lot more commercial in that area. So just kind of briefly, in my discussions with some other commercial developers, they've just explained that typically what they're looking for is they're looking for areas that are quickly developing with residential homes. You'll see areas such as Lehigh or Harriman that have been developing quickly. That's areas that they desire because there's rooftops there, and, you know, they've essentially coined the phrase, retail follows rooftops. So the more rooftops you put in, typically, that's a more desirable place for commercial. So just kind of going off of what was stated in the West Jordan Retail Market Study by Zeine's Bank in 2013, to support retail and higher-density residential development should be considered in the central area of the city. This is along Redwood Road, typically between 70th and 90th. So that's the central area of the city, some higher-density residential to support the retail there. It could be a primary for restaurants, clusters, and, you know, lunchtime eating, employment center, other development opportunities in that area. As you're bringing more people who live there, you're bringing more traffic, and then you're having more people frequent these retail shops. So just to kind of wrap everything up, what we were proposing in this property, it's not multifamily, it's not extremely high-density, it's in keeping with the current residential developments nearby. We'll be having home prices that actually start in the mid-300s. We're selling this current model in Bluffdale at about 340, 350 range, and typically, who we see as our main buyer profiles there is young professionals, recent graduates from the colleges, you know, UVU, BYU, Utah, young families, and then empty nesters who are looking to downgrade. So you're going to have a lot of owners who are going to be occupying their units and then staying in those occupied units versus people who are looking to purchase a unit and rent it out and try to use that as an investment piece. Here's a similar project that we actually did just up the road in Midvale. I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with the Bingham Junction area. So we worked with Candlelight Homes and DAI to develop out this piece. This is sort of a mixed-use with some more multifamily stuff down here, but this kind of gives you an idea of the single-family homes that we'd be putting in and supplying in that area. And this was an extremely successful project, and, you know, I think that we could obviously do the same thing here in West Jordan. So by that, once again, targeting millennials, that's sort of what we've been going for with the younger professionals who are working at tech jobs. We've had a couple people desire locations more in, more infill positions, closer to areas like the new Overstock Building, areas that they can, you know, easily jump on a train. You'll see here, it's a little bit more than a half-mile to the track stop, so you'll have the ability to have these residents either walk or just quickly drive and maybe have a park-and-ride, or, you know, have somebody drop them off, and they can take public transportation into their job. So that being said, once again, these homes aren't on the low end, they're going to be a little bit higher scale. These will all be about 2,000 to 200 square feet with an unfinished basement that'll allow for roughly an extra 1,000 square feet. Here's a couple photos of our existing subdivision that have these models on it in Bluffdale, and it's been an extremely well-selling product in there. And once again, like I said, a lot of young couples, young families, looking to purchase homes like these. Just some interior shots of what we'd be putting up, so a little bit more higher-end stuff. Then finally, the other benefit to this project is that, you know, once this project gets developed, whoever develops it obviously has to put in this connector road right here with Gardner Lane, which will create an intersection at Redwood Road and provide for traffic alleviation on 1300 West during peak hours. So we've actually reached out to UDOT and kind of discussed it with them, and, you know, we've talked through the process that that would take. Currently, they've explained that their typical process is you put the intersection in, they'll do a traffic study, and as soon as they can, they get it on their list of things. You know, we've been working with them to see if... You know, we've been working with them to see if that's something that they would expedite but, you know, that's obviously a conversation that would have to happen later on down the road. Thank you.
Any questions from council of the applicant? Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Good to see you.
You too.
Just a quick question is, on the most recent concept plan, how many dwelling units were on that concept plan?
The most recent one that was shown, let me see if I can get back to it real quick, that one's 43 units but we have gone ahead and removed this unit here off of Redwood Road and just turned this into open space so that will put us at 42 units.
Okay, so 42 units on 6.25 acres.
Yep.
Okay. This question is going to come up on the next agenda item.
Okay.
So I'll hold for that for now, so thank you.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. All the different concept plans, it shows a street dead, being a dead end into the joining subdivision.
Correct, yeah.
Is there a reason that doesn't connect into there?
Are you talking about this one right here?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is actually the, it does connect. If you see the, the little fans out here, this would be connecting into the subdivision. We would have to provide secondary access for this subdivision for fire safety reasons and we would need that secondary access point as well. So in our discussion, we would provide some type of gate to keep this a gated community and if I'm not mistaken, this is a buildable lot and so at that point, this would be removed and then you would allow your fire access out to this gate and then you would have a gate here that the fire department could access through as well and then they would have those two access points.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rambus?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. On the distance on Gardner Lane, that new, new extension there, you've got about six houses between the road coming in, does that give enough storage capacity for cars that would be traveling on Gardner Lane as well as leaving this subdivision to kind of queue up? Or how many feet?
For right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe so. That's about 400, well, it's 400 feet from here to here so you're looking at close to 250 feet. I think if we measured it out, I remember it was about 10 car lanes. I don't think that would be an issue since this isn't going to be gated off. If anybody's turning in here, it's not going to create a traffic backup. So I, I guess, I don't see that as being an issue. Is that what your concern was?
Yeah.
This would be gated?
Well, not, not that it's gated but that you've got residents who'll be going down
Right.
Gardner Lane to get onto Redwood Road plus this, the 42 homes in this subdivision without a traffic light there presently.
Right.
Would there be enough queuing so that it's not congested because if they're, if they're coming out to go towards Redwood Road, hoping they don't block the eastbound
Right.
travel.
Right, I understand that. I do believe this would allow for about 15 cars to back up if, if I remember my calculations correctly. So it's somewhere in that range. So, I mean, on an extremely high-traffic day, you might have a little bit of backup but overall, I, I wouldn't think that would be a large issue, so.
Okay, and then, we, we had talked about like a trail access so
Yeah.
some of the residents there could get over to the tracks to kind of help alleviate some of that.
Mm-hmm.
And this is just, this is just a concept here, right?
Right, right.
The trail in it.
Yeah, so that one, if you go back here, we've already kind of, this is another concept we've been working on, we've already kind of made that adjustment on this one. I do have a more up-to-date one that my engineer sent back to me today that has this concept plan with that trail but I've submitted the PowerPoint prior to that so, I mean, there is an updated concept with this concept, these lots moved up and then a trail through here that would allow access to Redwood.
And then the last question I had is the, the homes that are, the existing homes that are already there, they're single-story.
Correct, yeah, these ones are single-story.
And you're proposing two-story, so is there, is there some landscape in the backyard of the developments that would be proposed as part of the HOA or part of the development like trees that would provide some privacy? You know, you're up on a second floor, look down
Right.
neighbor's backyard.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's definitely something we could look at and putting in some shrubbery. My thought on that is, you're looking at, most of these have a 10-foot setback and then these are about 20 to 30 feet. So at any given point, you're looking at 20 foot plus 10, so that's 30 feet and then 40 feet there. So a setback might be large enough that that wouldn't be an issue but should that become an issue, that's something we would explore to put back there. Obviously, at the end of the day, we want to provide as much privacy for the existing subdivision as well as our incoming subdivision, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing for item 7A. If you're here to speak on this item, now would be the opportunity. You will be allowed three minutes and please state your name and address for the record.
I'm short. Kathy Dangit, 8687 South, Cynical Dove Drive. I'm in the Dove Meadows, Dove Meadows community, I'm on the board. And one of our ex-board members met with the developers to talk about some things without getting the whole board's input on that. Anyway, just, just want to say, we still need to be secluded and gated. We don't want to walk through trail or gate with these guys. We don't want a shared gate for them to come in our community. We are, you know, we purchased homes in a gated community and we want to stay that way. So whether they get the zoning or not is not up to me and I don't really, some other people might have an opinion on that. I don't really care personally but they have to work with us on keeping us secluded. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Don Ganson. I'm the owner of the property and we would love to see this go through. I've had multiple, and I mean multiple, people come try to buy this property and in the past two years, nobody wanted to do, have anything to do with it, either because they didn't want to deal with West Jordan or they didn't want to put anything, any commercial upfront, any offices. I've had, I've had a lot of people from Dove Meadows tell me that they, they really don't want to see me sell because they enjoy my animals out there, they enjoy looking at the pasture, same with the people over on, in the twin homes. And I've even talked with some people in Dove Meadows and they had told me that they're going to do everything they can to keep this from going forward but, you know, I'm 63 years old, I, I'm not as healthy as I used to be and I can't keep this farm up anymore. And this is, this is it. If, if this doesn't happen, I don't know what's gonna, what's gonna go, what's gonna be next. So hopefully you guys see that this will work and I think it's a great plan and I hope we get your vote tonight. Anybody have any questions for me?
Thank you.
My name's Mark Peterson and I am the owner but in agreement with, that's a good one right there. My home is, you have a pointer on this? My home is this one here. And it's surrounded on three sides by Don Ganson's property. This home here was my grandmother's home. This home was built in 1970, or, uh, not 1970, 1946, 70 years ago, the year I was born. My dad built it with his own two hands. This house has a lot of sentimental value to me but I'm not here to say preserve it, keep it because the complexion of the city has changed. Redwood Road has changed. When it was a small street, I delivered newspapers on that street, on Redwood Road. I delivered newspapers from 90th and Gardner Lane and the Sugar Factory housing all the way to 78th. I delivered papers for four years from 8th grade to 11th grade. My brother took over after that and my brother, I don't know if any of you know my brother Merlin, he was handicapped. He couldn't ride a bike and deliver papers the way I did but he walked. And he walked until he got hit by a car. And that's the nature of what Redwood Road has changed. It was too dangerous for him to cross. And it was a two-lane highway back then, came a four-lane, now it's a six-lane highway. The nature has changed. My sisters and I, dad died in 91, mom died in 2003, they've lived in the home their whole married life after, after they built it. And it has a lot of sentimental value but my sisters and I agree that we don't want it to be the old house on Redwood Road. We don't want it to be the standout thing. So we've, we've agreed with Don Ganson to, to sell it and we've been hoping that it would be sold in a nice way, that when we drive by Redwood Road, I live in Provo now and when we drive by our old home, my sisters have been living there after mom died and we're, we're okay to see it sold but we'd like to see it sold in a nice way. We'd like to drive by and say, oh, that McDonald's, that's where we used to live or whatever. But now this nice community that they're proposing is even better. So I'm here to say that even though this home has tremendous sentimental value in it, how many of you were living in West Jordan in 1946? I don't see any hands going up. So I've got deeper roots than any of you here and I'm happy to see this sort of positive development. So I speak in favor of it and ask you to consider it favorably. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your honor, respected councilman, my name's Gary Cannon. My roots don't go quite that far back. My grandparents moved to West Jordan in the 20s and, and I'm proud to say that I am a business owner in Riverton, or in West Jordan. I am a landowner, property owner in West Jordan. This morning on my way into the office, I stopped at three different businesses in West Jordan. I do live in Riverton now. I have to speak on behalf and in favor of, of this development, me being one of the joint owners on one of that north parcels. And I want to echo the developers' sentiment. I, I think our greatest challenges as a city are the 70th South, the 78th South and 90th South corridor where they appear to be going more dark with larger tenants moving out of these huge 100, 200,000-square-foot boxes that, that have been put in. More commercial, more B and C-type office uses in the future are not the answer for that Redwood Road corridor. We're sitting on projects now, as he touched on, that are 15 and 20 years into their development and they still have not been built out. These B and C uses start to become C and D. They start to go from 10 bucks a foot down to five bucks a foot, the uses that come in there and everybody needs to start their own business if that's what they choose to do but the uses that come from these down the road sometimes aren't reflected on the values of the city and the residents who live around there. Bringing this many property owners in will create more of a, people taking some commitment to their, their community and, and I'm in favor of, of seeing this go through and this isn't, this isn't apartments, this isn't condominiums, this isn't twin homes. Those are all good things and this isn't entry-level housing and this isn't affordable housing. People are going to own these, they're going to take pride in that and I appreciate the time, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Bill Hyner, 1417 West, 8380 South. My roots don't go back as far as, as this gentleman's either. I have been, I've lived in West Jordan within probably five blocks of this property for the last 30 years. It is in my backyard and you know, you've heard a lot and I did when I was on the Planning Commission, NIMBYs, not in my backyard. Well, this is in my backyard but I think it's going to be a great improvement to the area as it sits now and will make, make for a more productive area in that when you get the road coming out, that's going to be a definite improvement. I think the homes that they're going to be building in there are not, as Mr. Cannon said, are not going to be starter-type homes. And I, as I walk around the neighborhood and you go back, you walk into that dead end back there and you're just, you know, whether you're walking or driving, it's, you're stuck there and you have to go back out around to a half-road that's back there that butts up to the other pasture over there. And so I think this would be a great improvement and I'm, I speak in favor of it, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Michelle Aubrey from the Dove Meadows. I'm, I'm going to say that we're per se not against houses being, being built in that location but like Kathy said, we are a gated community and that this is why we bought our houses. And I'm glad that Mr. Ganson and Mr. Peterson are able to sell their properties but however, they are not going to be in that area anymore so they won't be affected by what's going, what is being built. We do want to keep our properties separated from this new development and we do not want to have, we do not want to have any kind of connecting trails or any kind of roads being open to the other houses. Unfortunately, I don't think it's to our benefit. We do, we want to keep our privacy, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on item 7A, please?
Hi, I'm Tammy Wright, I live on 8390 South and 1617 West and I actually live really close to this, I had no idea this was happening, that's cool. I'm actually impressed, I'm not a fan of gated communities because it means that my husband and I can't walk there and we love to walk. We walk down to the Home Depot and buy stuff occasionally for our house and we even ride our bikes down to the AMC to watch movies sometimes. And opening that up would be wonderful and, and so I, I'm in favor of homes going in there. We, we love to see people in our neighborhood, we love to get to know people and walking down around there and riding our bikes around there would be wonderful. If it's a gated community, that's, well, that's too bad because I couldn't get into it but, but at the same time, it would be really attractive and I'm in favor of that and so I just wanted to say that and let you know what I think, living nearby with a family, that I would really like to see it developed, so that's my opinion, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Elke Wong from, sorry, I'm having a cold, so. So what I concern is the Garden Link is going to open, so how city is going to work on the safety for the residential? Because on that road is a lot of residential, they don't get used to have that many cars traffic, plus they don't have like rest pedestrian road for north side of the Garden Link. So if that road is going to open, if city require the developer to put the road for present, for people to walk, so I think we need to wa, work through for the safety for residents, so that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will close the public hearing for item 7A and return to the council for discussion and/or motion. Councilmember Hagan?
Thanks, mayors. I get a question from the staff. I'm very familiar with this property and my first question, I know this isn't, we're rezoning question tonight, but Gardner, Gardner Lane?
Yes.
If this was, this, this went through and the developer built his home, do we have Gardner Lane slated for improvement with a signal and everything?
Gardner Lane is a master plan road, it's a collector's street under master plan so whatever development goes in here, whether it be the cemetery zone or office, Gardner whether it be this, if it's rezoned or office, Gardner Lane is a requirement, uh, to be built. And as Mr. Ganson said, there was ma- a few developers that come in that just can't stomach that kind of cost because it is expensive. As far as the traffic signal, that's up to UDOT, and they're, they're, they, they do a study, and then they determine the, uh, need for a traffic light. There's sometimes it's said that UDOT, their study is how many people have been killed before they put a light up. Um, I don't believe that's true, but, um, what I have heard from, heard from our engineering department is if this is built, then they'll immediately go into that study, uh, as whether light is required at this time or not. It cer- certainly would be, in my opinion, appropriate, but I'm not the traffic engineer, so.
Well, one more question too. I, again, whether, wherever this goes on zoning, I still like to sit and have staff look at these things, that light, obviously, because one gentleman said his brother got hit on that road, and it's a dangerous road now, too. And so for cars and people.
I, I think this certainly is, um, starting UDOT to think about.
Okay. The other thing is, if this proposal, as far as the homes is, um, decided on, and I know that's not what we're making decision on, are we gonna allow, uh, exits onto Redwood Road there?
Um, my best guess at this point is this is what UDOT's gonna say your exit point on is, is a collector street. Um, you know, to keep traffic speeds flowing in Redwood, and to keep traffic moving, they like to restrict those to collector streets anymore, not individual driveways. Now, if there's no other way around it, then yes, but with this being constructed, they'll say that'll be the point.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, mayor. A couple other questions. Does the Dove Meadows subdivision have just one access?
Well, it has two right now, and the second one being this buildable lot. And the reason that lot has never been built upon is for fire access at this point, and because the fact that Gardner Lane is not constructed through. Um, if this was to be constructed, uh, we've, we've talked to the applicant, and a access, emergency fire access would take place on this road, uh, both for the Dove Meadow property and for this one. It would be emergency only. There'd be no, you know, movement of, of people or regular day-to-day cars, so that the property owner who owns this property can then develop that lot.
So when Dove Meadows was built out, what was the intention for secondary access? Was it intended that, I mean, it looks like there's a couple of streets that stub, so it looks like the intention may have been to connect to neighboring community?
Yeah, I think I've seen some renderings at one time where they, they planned on going all the way to Redwood with their, their project, but they didn't own that property, and that kind of fell apart, I think, so, yes. Oh, their intent was to be a much larger phased project than what it turned out to be.
And then the next question, it was mentioned that the, there'd be HOA's that take care of the parks, or take care of the open space. Would these be public roads then, or private roads? The HOA would also be responsible for maintenance of those roads?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, that, that does it for my questions. I've got a couple of their comments, but I can hold on to those any of the questions first.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, mayor. Um, just wanted to, you know, the, uh, the planning commission had kind of brought this back as a negative on, on a couple matters, and I just wanted to find out if we knew the office occupancy rate that's south of this project. I know there's four pads, uh, that they haven't, is it, is it underutilized right now, the existing office space?
In the city?
Not, well, the, the, I'm just wondering if anybody in the city knows what the occupancy rate of those offices that are south of this project?
Do you have that in? I don't, um...
But if he hasn't built, if he hasn't built four pads, then it would seem that, uh, he doesn't have a demand.
Let me see if I can find an aerial. I don't think it, and as you can see, um, these two, there's a couple of buildings being built right now to the south, and there's still a portion of it that has not been built out. What that is, I don't know. And then up by the National Business, uh, Services Center, there's, there's a larger pad to the north of that that, uh, still has not been built out with office. And so, uh, I would say that there are probably two-thirds of the project is completed, at least on both of those sites, Jaguar Place and the, I can't remember the other name of the project.
And, and then my second question is, with it, with it zoned for office currently?
Now, zoned right now, it's a real residential, it's on the...
But is master plan office? Would they be, would that, 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 uh, master plan, is that similar to the office space that's to the south, or is it a different style of office?
It would just be office, you know, whatever would fit in there, but it, I'm sure that close to residential, and with a fairly constrained size of six acres, it would probably turn out to be, uh, more of the, the same type of office we already have along Redwood Road, both in West Jordan and South Jordan. You see the, kind of the two-story or the single-story office. You know, it wouldn't be a high-rise, that type of thing, because there are height restrictions, and there's really no area to park a lot of people, so it is constrained.
That's right. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, just a quick question on gated communities. Um, in this, now with forty-two units in here, you would need two, two access points?
Yes.
Correct. Um, and a gated access for a gated community counts?
Yes.
As one of those access points, even though the residents can't use it, the fire department can?
And that is correct, chief, right, yeah. And it's mainly, mainly a fire concern, so, fire safety, life safety, so, yes.
Okay, 'cause this development will only have one, I don't wanna say public access, but one non-gated access?
Yeah.
Just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Yeah, that, all, all that'll take negotiations with the Dove Meadows people, the developers, you know, he's going to have to work with them, uh, to make that happen to where both, both parties are happy. I know Dove Meadows wants to keep their community secluded and gated, that's what they bought into, and there's nothing wrong with that, and so they'll have some work on their hands to get that done.
Councilmember Cunningham, do you have a follow-up?
I did not a question, just, uh, rather comments. I think it, um, well, I, I always get a little bit leery when we're getting rid of what was in the general plan, when we move away from what was originally proposed. Um, I'm not sure that we've heard a strong enough argument as to why this can't be developed, um, as professional office. In other instances where we've allowed for some flexibility there, um, part of the property has changed, but some of the property has remained, but here we're seeing the whole thing change. Still struggle a little bit with that, but that's not a deal breaker for me. The, the one that I have the hardest time with is, uh, well, probably the comment that was made right off the bat, that, um, PR, the PRD zone being requested is really meant for larger development. Um, I mean, there's some things where I think it would be really useful here. Let me back up a little bit. Uh, right now, we're just looking at the rezon, and changing this from what it is right now to a PRD. We're not considering the development plan. For me, because this is such a small parcel, um, it would be easier to approve or deny this if it came with a development plan as well. I'd like to see both. That said, if we were discussing the, well, so without the development plan, I'm leaning heavily in opposition to this. Um, if this were the development plan that were to be proposed, I would still be leaning in opposition, uh, because it, the, it, it seems like the purpose of the PRD is to get more units on there, and I'm not seeing, uh, some of the same things that the planning commission brought up. Um, they pointed out a number of shortcomings, I think there's been some attempts made to remedy them, but some of them still just aren't quite there. Uh, when we talk about, uh, in particular, the, the flow of the community, um, what's the, here it is. Using, uh, PRD to allow integration mutually compatible residential units, so I could see if this development was trying to mirror or somehow complete the Dove Meadows, um, development, if the two of them wanted to work together to make it one larger community, I could see where it would be appropriate to use PRD to accomplish that, to make that, um, to, to completely, to allow the integration mutually compat- compatible residential uses, if the residents wanted to do that. Um, the other comment here was, um, optimum land planning with greater efficiency, convenience, um, then would be allowed by conventional zoning. I'm looking at the way the roads are set up, and I'm not seeing that point being met. So I, I think we're on the right track. If we do need to move away from professional office to something else, um, I, I could be amenable to that, but I, I don't think we're quite there yet, so I'm, uh, leaning away from, leaning towards denial at this point. But I, I'd still welcome any other thoughts. Thank you, mayor.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, mayor. And I can understand where Councilman Cunningham is coming from, and I took the opportunity to go be, meet many of these residents in the last couple of days, out in the rain, to go visit them and, uh, see what their thoughts and feelings were. And, uh, actually, the largest concerns that they had was that Gardner Lane going through there, more than they had concerns of how that property's wanting to get developed. But the larger amount of people I met with are in favor of putting residential in there. And I met with people who lived in Dove Meadows and people who live without, so I met with some of both. Anyway, the, uh, most of the residents out there were in favor of seeing that go residential. There were some that were not, that would prefer seeing that remain as a, as offices there, and their main purpose of wanting to keep it office is because it'd be quieter on weekends and on evenings compared to houses where people are more there on weekends and evenings. So taking that into account and meeting with that and looking over this plan, and I realize this is a concept plan, so I won't make my decision on that layout right now at this time. But based on the other information, the findings set forth in the staff report, upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move to the city council approval ordinance seventeen dash zero one, admitting the future last land use map from professional office to high-density residential, and rezone six point two-five acres from RR one eight to zone to PRD H zone on property generally located at eighty-six seventy-nine South Redwood Road.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Burton and a second by Councilmember Hagan. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Jacob.
Yeah, it's just a procedural, uh, point of order, if I may. The, uh, rezone is the next agenda item, and it's a separate public hearing. We might need to consider that separately because we haven't, am I, am I barking up the wrong tree? This is just a future land use map public hearing that we've had so far, so I don't think we can move to rezone yet, until we've had that public hearing, because it's been agendized separately, maybe somebody wanted to speak on the rezone, but not the future land use map? It's all one?
It's all one.
It's all one? What is item seven B? Oh, that's a different project. I'm barking up the wrong tree, I apologize. That said, a question on this motion then. Um, are we establishing the density of the pine residential development with this motion?
The density is within the range of the PRD H. The density will be established if the rezone takes place when the actual development plan is submitted to the planning commission appro- and recommended approval, then it will come back to the city council. That is when the dense, actual density will be established with the development plan.
Okay, great. I was looking at that other agenda item that has a density number on it, so I was, uh, just double checking on that. Um, great, that's all I have, sorry, thanks.
As well.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
No.
Mayor Wall?
No.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
The vote passes four to three.
Item seven B, public hearing item, received public input and considered for approval ordinance seventeen dash zero two regarding preliminary development plan, establishing density of fourteen point three-five dwelling unit per acre for Gladstone Place located at approximately seventy-eight hundred South Mountain View Corridor in the HFR WSPA zoning District. Garbet Land Investments, LC Richard Welch applicant. David?
Yes, uh, Scott Langford will present this item. Oh, sorry, Larry Gardner.
I'd like that you're the boss, you can make it, then I can go home. Okay. Um, Gladstone Place is, and some of the council may remember, um, the rezoning that took place on this a few years back, it, it's UDOT property, or was UDOT property adjacent to the Mountain View Corridor. Um, Gladstone Place is right at this location, it's in the Highlands, uh, master plan development. Uh, the council's very familiar with, with the Highlands. Uh, it is a three-hundred-and-forty-seven unit multifamily four-brand apartment complex, but they're building a, a townhome style. Um, each, each of the units will have garages. The applicant has really, uh, worked almost for two and a half years on the design of this, uh, project, and trying to design it around, uh, road access and the, the Mountain View Corridor. Um, but it is part of the Highlands master plan, one of, one of the multifamily components of that, that plan. Uh, mayor, with your permission, um, Garbet Homes is here, who's a developer, um, I'd like to give them a few minutes to maybe answer your questions or walk you through their project. Is that appropriate?
That would be appropriate.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, my name is, uh, Richard Welch with Garbet Homes. I'm a vice president of land. I have here with me tonight, uh, Scott Howell, who I know all of you know, and also Bruce Hanson, who is our vice president of construction, if you have any questions about, uh, the units that we're gonna build. I wanted him to be here to answer those. We're here also representing Peterson Development. This is a, a partnership between Garbet and Peterson to do this project. Uh, Larry gave you the, the outline of the project, um, for those of you, uh, that were on the council back when, uh, we brought the UDOT property, uh, before you, is it this one? Yeah. Just to refresh everybody's memory, this is, this is the Clay Hollow Wash. There was this remnant piece that, that was on the, uh, Mountain View Corridor side of the wash, if you will, and it, it didn't make sense to leave that, uh, it, it didn't work as a commercial piece, and so we presented that to you to be annexed into the Highlands master plan and, uh, be zoned HFR under your, uh, unique, uh, s- west side area plan zone. And, uh, a- as you know, that zone has a process where, uh, we present our development proposal and where we think we're going beyond just, uh, the minimal, and, uh, the zoning, the HFR, uh, density allows from nine units per acre up to eighteen units per acre, depending upon how we design the project. And, and so what you have in front of you is the, is the development plan that lays out, uh, all of those issues and questions and, and specifics about how we're going to develop this property. One of the things that we were excited about when we brought it to you a year ago was that, uh, Clay Hollow Wash is, is deep and it is potentially dangerous, and so through, uh, Gladstone Place, uh, we would pipe that wash and turn the area above the wash into a beautiful open space with a trail in the middle of it. And, uh, in the middle of your development plan, we, we show you... And in the middle of your development plan, we, we show you the variety of amenities that are going to be installed in this, in our development. And here, there's the summary of them right there. So there'll be a clubhouse with a swimming pool and also what amounts to a second pool, but it will be developed in the form of a splash pad for people to play in. And then a variety of sports courts, putting green, swing sets, buffer area, landscape buffer areas, green belts. We're going to have a dog park, three playground and equipment areas, a spa, three barbecue picnic areas, volleyball, three volleyball courts, three soccer fields, and associated common areas courtyards. And benches along the trail and lights along the trail, LED lights along the trail. Just by way of reminder, the trail is a, a public trail. It's, it's the relocation of the UDOT trail that's there already and it comes through the project. And so all of this beautiful landscaped area will be... That's only a black and white one, but all of this area will be available to all of the public in West Jordan. And this is where it leaves our project and then continues on in the UDOT trail alignment where that trail currently is. So this is the part that will go away and be moved over the top of where the wash was. And then this also will eventually provide access to the future commercial area that's part of the Highlands' master plan. So this isn't a very good picture, but let's, if I can find one that summarizes... I don't see it. But as Larry mentioned, the reason we were gone for a year was to figure out that access issue with UDOT. We're excited about being back now that that's been resolved. There are certain conditions about that access that make it temporary and we understand those and agreed to all of those conditions. Maybe one final thing, I'll just review for you and then answer any questions you might have, is Larry said, but here you can see that all of the units in our project are going to be townhome-style units with direct access garages that are a part of each unit. There'll, there'll be adequate visitor parking that meets your code, in fact, exceeds your code. And so this is not the typical stacked unit, high-density project, apartment project. And in fact, our density is in the thirteen to fourteen range, much lower density than you would typically see. And all of that is because of the, the extensive open space that I discussed already. You have a lot of material in front of you. We've worked on this for a long time. I'll just end there and answer questions if you have any.
Questions for council? Looks like you did a good job.
Okay, thank you.
We will now open the public hearing for item seven B. If you're here to speak on this item, now would be the opportunity. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing for item seven B and return to the council for discussion on motion. Councilmember Nichols. I'm ready for a motion, but I saw a green light, so I'll hold off on that. Do you have a question or discussion?
Discussion.
Okay, please.
Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey.
I just wanted to bring this up in contrast to some of the other proposals that have come to the City Council in the last few meetings. In my mind, this is exactly why we have some of the flexibility with some of the others, to find a way to be creative and take a unique approach to something that's already out there. I really like going the townhouse, the townhome style for apartments if we're going to do rentals, not having big parking lots that cause all kinds of problems, the direct access through the garage right there in your own unit. I think this is a prime example, and I wish that there were more developers in the room to take note of this and hopefully follow suit with some of theirs. So I was going to speak in favor of it if there wasn't any other comment, make a motion after I said that, but I'll defer to Councilmember Nichols.
Councilmember Nichols.
Thank you. I move that we approve the preliminary development plan for Gladstone Place as presented in the packet with the conditions of approval as presented.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Nichols, second by Councilmember McConaughey. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember McConaughey.
One last comment. I also very much appreciate the developer taking time to reach out to us well in advance of any of this coming up. Those who are, are more new to the council may not be aware, but they came and talked to us about some of the issues with the gully that comes through there, had a lot of information for us, a lot of time accumulated, put a lot of footwork into getting to this point. And it's just very appreciative to see the developer trying to work that well with the city. So, thank you.
And yes, I'd just like to state that I look forward to the day that that gully is covered with pipe. It is quite a dangerous gully adjacent to a major highway and a walkway, so. Let's vote.
Councilmember Hagia.
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember McConaughey. Councilmember Jacob.
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Mayor Rolfe.
Yes.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Vote passes seven in paper.
This is the item eight A, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution seventeen dash zero five regarding an appeal, an appeal of impact fees paid for Overland Storage LLC and a reimbursement in the amount of seventy-four thousand, nine hundred sixty-two dollars, ninety-three cents. David Oka.
Yes, thank you. Overland Storage has requested consideration for reduction of some of their impact fees, primarily, primarily the road impact fee. The procedure, as approved by City Council for appealing these kinds of fees, follows basically this outline. The applicant has to pay the full fee upfront and then demonstrate why there is a reason for them to have the fees reduced. So Overland Storage came in and they paid the full fee under our impact fee schedule, a hundred and eight thousand dollars. They presented staff with a report from Hales Engineering that said that the road impact fee should be around thirty-three thousand dollars. We sent that, that report to Tischler-Weiss, who confirmed the findings of the Hales Engineering study. Just a little background, at one point in time, the uses for storage and warehouse were separate and were at a lower rate because the road impact was indeed less. At some point in time, that was combined with other commercial uses, other commercial uses that did have indeed an impact to the roads. The study that was recently done with Tischler and Weiss, by Tischler and Weiss, addressed that and kind of broke those, those categories out. But those have not been adopted yet by the council. And so the applicant has followed the procedure as approved by the City Council and is here for your consideration for reduction of those fees based on the information that they have submitted. Any questions?
Questions from council? Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. David, we've had four, right, of these requests come through?
One.
Come to the council.
One, one reduction was via a development agreement with Jeff Bytek and his TOD. The other one was, there was an assisted living project that appealed and was granted, a reduction, and then Jordan Landing at the last meeting. This is actually the only third, third one that has followed this procedure.
Okay, I'm just trying to think if there is a common thread here that the impact fee schedule needs to be looked at in a different way. If there's something in common between the, the three or four that have asked for this, you know what I mean? That, that maybe these uses need to be broken out? If there is a common thread? If there's an underlying commonality to these that says, hey, they fall under this category in the impact fee, so they have to pay this, but then X, Y, or Z happened, so they can request an appeal? If there's a, if there's a commonality, like there's a, maybe there's another zone or another category that we need to consider for, you know, light impact use zone? Or I'm just making things up, but something so that, A, we're not collecting things that we ethically maybe shouldn't be giving, you know, shouldn't be collecting in the first place. Obviously, if they deserve a refund, maybe we shouldn't be requesting it in the first... Not to say we shouldn't be, under the current, under the current code, we should. But what I'm saying is if they, if they also are due a refund because they went through the steps and it looks like their impact was not what the impact says it was in the impact fee schedule, then should we look at the impact fee schedule?
Right, yes. And that was looked at. The study was, actually came before the council a couple of meetings ago, but it was not officially adopted because there was some questions about multifamily housing component of the study. But in that study, the warehouse and storage unit component was broken out separately from the other commercial uses. So you're on the right tracks. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Just, just so that, I'm sorry, I'll get to you guys in just a moment, but wouldn't there be wisdom in postponing action on this item until we have the impact?
That is certainly an option. The applicant is here because as staff looked at this issue, we knew that, that this item would serve us at some point in time. However, we felt that the applicant did deserve some kind of an address to his issue. And if it's a preference of the City Council to combine this once we examine the study by Tischler and Weiss, I think that's okay, assuming that the applicant's all right with that as well. And we can just table that or continue this to another date.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. This actually ties in with one of the things that I wanted to bring up with this inside of the eight C when we talk about goals for strategic planning. So I would be in favor of tabling this till, till another date.
Can I just ask the applicant if he'd be okay with that? Would that be acceptable to you? It appears like there's going to be a change that would make this fairly straightforward.
Whatever we need to do to make sure that we have an opportunity to, to get a refund, that payment of that fee was a big surprise to us. Maybe we just weren't as well informed as we needed to be. But it did cause a hardship for us in terms of the amount of money that we had to pay. And the two studies that were done, one by us and one by the city, did show that basically the traffic that we generate from our project wouldn't even be considered a rounding error compared to some of the other heavy manufacturing uses that are out there. We generate twelve trips in the morning, and that's six cars going in and six cars going out. And we generate twenty-two in the afternoon, and that's eleven cars going in and eleven cars going out. It's hardly an impact at all. We just, we'll do whatever we need to do to have the opportunity to have this looked at and hopefully reduced.
Mr. Mayor, if I could chime in there from a legal perspective. My understanding, and Mr. Oka can correct me if I'm wrong, is that the approximate timeframe that our, that Tischler-Weiss, our impact fee specialist, could render an updated iteration of our general citywide impact fee study is by about the end of March. But I just wanted to make sure that the applicant understands that it could be up to, at most, an additional two and a half months. But we are close. But I think it would be appropriate if he just, if he just formally waives that on the record because our, otherwise our own rules require that we make a decision fairly quickly, so.
If it means the opportunity for a positive ruling in favor of reduction in fees, we'll do whatever it takes. If that means a waiver, we've, David, we've waited, what, three or four months so far? So what's another couple of months if we need it, so?
You've been very patient, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hagia.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm sorry I had to use the restroom there, but I, I just, and I'm in agreement with what's being said. I just want to make sure, and I talked to the city manager about that, that we be informed about what code we're going to be following. I couldn't find it, so it says that we'll, the fees are in excess of a percentage cost as fourth in city code. I'd like to see that code when we come back, so. And then the study, apparently there's a study that's not in our packet. So I'd like to see that too. Thank you, Mayor.
Do we need a motion to table this item?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate, Mayor, to have a formal motion to table. In definite period of time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we postpone this item until our April twelfth meeting.
Second. A motion by Councilmember McConaughey, a second by Councilmember Burton. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to double check with legal. You were suggesting it would be the end of March, so the first meeting in April should be reasonable?
I think so, yes.
And then with the applicant, that would be amenable as well?
Let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagia?
Yes.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
The vote passes seven in paper.
Item eight B, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution seventeen dash zero six, confirming the appointment of a council member to serve as mayor pro temp for, for 2017. I would just run out of the gate here. I would, I would nominate for Mayor Pro Temp, Councilmember McConaughey. That would be my motion. Second. A motion by Mayor Rolfe, second by Councilmember Hagia. Discussion to the motion. I'd like to state that this past year, unlike other years in the past, Councilmember McConaughey did not have much of an opportunity to serve. And I think it would be a fair move to appoint him for another year. Councilmember Anderson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to reiterate, I think I talked to each of you individually about this topic. Last meeting, a concern I had at the time on a couple of council members potentially running for the same seat. And after I thought about that more, I had kind of developed an idea that if you're running, you shouldn't be mayor pro temp. But I've clarified that in my own mind, that I would probably be opposed to that if it were multiple council members running for the same seat, but not individually. but not individually. So I just wanted to clarify that publicly with each of you, and I, I support the nomination.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I would be happy to accept the nomination. At the same time, I know we don't have much of a precedent out of a council member serving back to back. So I would also support Councilmember Nichols in that position as well, since he's the most tattered and has an art. Been there for a while. That said, I'm, I'm happy either way.
It's, I don't care. I want to speak out of line. I had the opportunity of doing it a few years back. It was my second year on the council. Likewise, I literally sat in for the mayor and won it at a chamber event. That was it. And didn't have much of an opportunity. The mayor was super active, was always present, so I just kind of sat in the background all the time. It was just fine, it was a great opportunity. I'm happy to serve in whatever, it doesn't matter. I'm just happy to be here.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. My only question is for either, I don't know, one of you guys actually, is travel schedule. I was going to say of the seven of us, you two are the ones that travel, so I would say. And obviously your point is to fill in, right, when the mayor can't be there? So that's my only question, is if that's changed or if you foresee a concern or anything like that.
My travel schedule has been difficult in the past, but it's changing substantially. We're, within my work, they're moving me into a different role. In fact, the last three months, I've only had one trip, whereas before, I think 2015, I had a hundred and something nights at hotels. This year's only eighty-ish. Next year's going to be fewer. For those that aren't aware, my wife and I are expecting, again, we've got a three-year-old and a one-year-old, and now we're expecting twins. So my work has been willing to find another position within the company that doesn't require the same amount of travel. And by the same token, I typically work from home, so I have flexibility with my schedule to slip in during the day. When others typically are required to be in an office, I can work whenever others are appropriate.
Councilmember Hagan.
Thanks, Mayor. Because we had an opportunity to experience Councilman McConaughey's leadership. He did an excellent job when the mayor was, I think it was a month ago, very organized, follow process. And so hence why I second this motion and the nomination, so thanks, Mayor.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Sure.
The vote passes seven in favor. Now we'll need a motion to approve the resolution of his name.
So moved.
Okay.
Second. Third.
So I have a motion by Mayor Rolfe, and a second by Councilmember Jacob. Discussion of the motion, seated on this vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
Aye.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagan?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Vote passes seven in favor.
Business item eight C, discussion of a maximum of five city council goals for completion during the 2017 calendar year. I'm putting a big on completion during the 2017 calendar year, allowing staff to be prepared on January 27, 2017, for the strategic planning session discussion to be held in the community room. And the reason I wanted to have this discussion in open forum is I've seen many discussions in many strategic planning sessions. We used to do it twice a year. And it seemed like, at least from my perspective, when you have more than four or five goals, it spreads things out so much that you just don't hone in on specific goals. So that's my challenge, is to get the majority of the council to come up with a maximum of five goals that we really want to discuss. The staff will have ample time to prepare for their presentation or their questions and answers on those specific goals by the 27th, so. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the goals that I would like to see set for 2017 calendar year is review and revision of our development standards as they relate to infill development. The big emphasis for this is we see a lot of growth in development on the west end of the city. We've seen even tonight, we've had a couple items that, they're trying to take development standards, set for new property, and retrofit them into, and squeeze them into these weird shaped parcels that are requiring backfill, and it's not working well. Just two, really for the sake of time, two super short examples, talking to Dave Oka. We get folks who come in here wanting to do a subdivision. Maybe they have one acre lot they want to divide into two separate parcels. They still have to pay the $10,000 fee for subdividing that you would have to pay for a full subdivision. That doesn't really work well and causes some of these parcels to stay undeveloped. Another one is the power or the utility poles that are out there. We require undergrounding of utilities. Well, if you have one parcel, I'm seeing in my mind, right across the street, just north of West Jordan Middle School, so about 7,400 South Redwood Road, you've got a couple parcels on the east side of Redwood Road. For somebody to go in and develop those, they're going to have to underground those wires that are in the back. So they take one power pole. On the south side, you're going to have to put a new utility pole. On the north side, a new utility pole, and then underwrite, underground that. So effectively, what was one pole is now two. And again, it's about a $10,000 price tag each. So some of our standards make it a little bit difficult and don't have the flexibility for infill development. I would really, really like to see us address that during 2017. So I'd like that to be one of our goals to complete for the year.
Okay, let's, hey, good one. I would like to, and I've asked and been granted permission for our staff to work on the water fees. I stated this early on when we were talking about fees in general. I got to be honest with you, and working with the staff members, this is going to take an hour and a half, two hours, because I want to fix it once and for all. A situation where we put into the code for years in the future to adjust the water rates under ordinance so that it doesn't have to be revisited every other year, or at least at every three-year interval, so. I would like that to be a part of the discussion. It would be a pretty big discussion item. Anyone opposed to that?
I just have a question.
Please.
Would that be water fees only, or would that be all the utility slash interpresses? I, I, I just think that stormwater, et cetera, could benefit from the same type of scrutiny.
Well, the problem is, is we really raised all the other fees. The council raised the other fees, and the water was held. We raised the multifamily portion and the commercial portion, but in anticipation of the strategic plan, we, I wanted to have more definitions and more structures.
My, my, my point on that, though, is that if we're going to put in like a semi, like a permanent fix, let's put a permanent fix across the board. Let's not just do like five permanent fixes as they each come up. Let's just do them all. That works?
Well, the only, the only one that, I guess, we could look at that, but water is based on the usage rate, and we purchase the water from an outside entity, so we don't have any control over what. Well, we do have, we've got thought about that. Peaking factor will have a factor on that, but that's an outside entity. Everything else, I believe, is, you know, we own and control, even as far as, you know, Seward Creek and plant. We own a major portion of that, so we have a major say in how that happens. This is purchased from another entity, which, that's, it, it apparently has gone up from three to five percent every year. And we'll be refining that. The trouble is, is we try to overgaage short time, and then we go in into a veers on the back end. And about every three years, it has to be adjusted. What I'm trying to get to, Steve Lane is the one that's really helping to facilitate this discussion, is a situation that every time ours goes up by a percentage, it's just passed on without having to change the entire rate, the fee schedule, every time. It just have verbiage in, that's would be my opinion, that have verbiage in the ordinance that automatically, as we get passed on that, it passes through. So that it doesn't have to have sat here too many years and had it one way or the other, so. That's, I'd be glad to have, if you'd like to prepare something to discuss at the end of the water one, some of the other utility fees, because I, you know, I have just a few opinions on.
So I figured.
Councilmember McConaughey.
If I could underscore what you were saying about water differing from some of the other utilities. Most of the others are just a flat fixed rate. We have the usage component, but we're also required, I understand we're required by law to also have a sort of a usage deterrent. So we have the tiered steps based on usage, which we don't have with any of the other components. We've also had very extensive, I think we've had one here for what, four hours on two separate occasions to discuss water rates. There are factors like the size of the hookup that somebody has, whether it's half inch, three quarter, full inch, something like that. Some of the broader location in the city, how many pumping stations do they have to hit? Do we need to consider any actual sources that come from the city well or somewhere else? There are a lot of factors involved, and water is one of the more complicated ones, whereas the others are a lot more straightforward. The other one was, the other component was fixed cost versus variable cost. We had set it up one year so that, we tried to encourage conservation, but then people conserve too much, so we didn't have enough funding coming in to cover the fixed cost, so we had to go back and adjust it. And the benefit of conserving was now you got your rates increased. Definitely want to avoid doing that. So I, I, I think the hour to two hours is very, potentially very light for the conversation on the water, but I wholeheartedly support that. There's, there's a lot to be said there. Thank you.
Councilmember Hagan.
Yeah, not concerning water, but again, I think, I don't know how other council members feel, but as again, I was talking to the city manager, I still think, and I would like to build this rec center. And I've expressed that to the city manager and the mayor. And we really need to, we spent money on it. We have a visual of it, and I think it's something we can achieve. And so I'd like to set that as a major objective during the retreat. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. I would support providing direction to staff to put a general obligation bond on the ballot. And I know we need to bring that back to the agenda item to have a public hearing, probably. Putting a general obligation bond on the ballot to see if residents want to pay for it. Ten and a half million dollars a year, a lot of money. So that's as far as the rec center goes. As far as goals go, one of the, there's a couple that I'd like to work on, but the overarching kind of commonality to all of them is show better, improve the aesthetics of the city. And so my challenge to staff on that would be to bring us a package of ordinances, if required, or budget amendments, or whatever it might need to be, to improve streetlights, especially along Redwood Road and our major archerials around the city center. For example, just drive at night from South Jordan into West Jordan on Redwood Road. You will notice a marked difference. Drive at night from Midvale into West Jordan on Seventy South, you'll notice a marked difference as well. So prioritize in the budget, streetlights on our, to look good on our major city center areas and major arterial streets. Streetscape ordinances or budgeting, whatever needs to be done to improve our streetscape appearances, whether that's more grass, less grass, zero escaping, work with our Jordan Valley Water Conservancy, whatever it might be, to put together something that is feasible, that looks good, that we can implement in the areas that don't look good. And also upkeep of city-owned property that's not a park, that's not a streetscape necessarily, but might be an empty lot, might be, whatever it might be, to, to improve the overall look of the city. That's my top priority. Part of that might be increased budget for code enforcement, and it might be increased budget for communications, Kimwell's office, adding another person there to just get the, kickstart the looking good. It'll help economic development, it'll help our residents, it'll help property values. It's a win-win-win situation, and that's, that's my top priority. So you call that aesthetics? Sure.
Aesthetics and economic development.
City aesthetics. I call it looking good.
I want to second that whole thing that he just said, but add entrances, city entrances, all city entrances to that. That's a really important part of that.
And see, I'm not as concerned with city entrances, although it's not, it's not wrong.
I want people to know they're here. I want them to feel it.
What I, what I, what I get is Salt Lake City doesn't hurt for economic development, right? When you enter Salt Lake City, you enter the crapping part there, Fourth, Fifth, Third West. When you're driving off the freeway to Salt Lake City, it looks horrible. Once you get into downtown, you feel nice. So I, I think it's important to focus on, but it is, the, the city entrances is not wrong. If we can make those nice two.
Well, city entrances don't have to be the geographical, the geographical boundary as well.
Right.
You get off of Bangor at Jordan Landing, Seventy South, you have this solid gray drab under the bridge. Whereas when you go down to the new Bridge in Tarragon, on Bangor Highway, and this is beautiful or anything, and you're like, wow, you're in Tarragon, look at the difference. Yeah, that, and that's, that's, I mean, to me, that's what I mean by entrances. When you get here, I want people to know it. Mayor Mike Jordan, welcome. We've discussed this at length, and I think everybody would agree with it.
Trouble is, I think they do know.
We want to change that.
I want to back up just one second. We talked about, talking about direction that they could also add at arts facility so that staff has direction. We spent, we spent money on both. Staff really needs to either proceed or let it go. One or the other, in any direction from the council. So on number three, art, arts facility as well, just so that we can give staff, and we've got, so we've got four items there. Can we, oh, Alan, excuse me, Councilmember Rensh?
Thank you, Mayor. All of these are very worthwhile. The three that I came up with, and I'm not trying, you know, I'd love to have one of the three fit, that fifth one maybe, but there's a lot of duplication, so I think some of them are already there. But number one on my list is just starting the groundwork on, on a vision of our economic development. And I've gone on a tour, I've done quite a bit in January, between writing shotgun with a snowplow, going to writing with Dave Oka and our development team through the city on a, on a two-hour tour, wasn't quite a three-hour tour. And also talked with police and fire. So the three that I talked about, or the three that I want to talk about, number one is laying the groundwork on economic development plan moving forward. If that's adding some staff and some recruiting opportunities to assist, and really get it into second gear and third gear. And I think that's something we can accomplish in 2017, is kind of lay the groundwork for that going forward so that we can be a destination. We've talked earlier today about hotels coming to our city, which is, is destination oriented, and so I would support a rec center, and I would support talking about an arts facility. So I would agree with that. And then Councilmember Jacob kind of touched on it with, with our communications as it relates to public safety, as it relates to putting a good face out with the city, with our communications department, being able to tie that in with economic development, it can tie it in with aesthetics of the city. Just being able to communicate effectively with the residents and the business community, and those that were trying to recruit into the city with professional pieces, so that our economic development team can recruit businesses into our city. So that's kind of all of all of it in a nutshell, and some of those tie in with what you said, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Burton first.
Thank you, Mayor. As all of you received my suggestions for strategic planning by you, Alan, physical paper. As I look, listen to what councilman Jacob had to say, I would like to think that my topic would fit under his category, so if I can use his umbrella, which signals over there, I think that would be appropriate, because that has to do with city aesthetics, yes. Because if you look down there about the Bangor Highway, and I've got the RDA, which could be different, or 90th South, 13th West, and some safe sidewalk sidewalks on Old Beagle, and the track stations, and installing some irrigation to replace trees that have died and they're broken off, we wanna replace them until we have some way to keep them alive, make it look good. And then 5600 West, not only is it aesthetics, but if we talk with Chief Nakor, he might mention how slow those fire trucks have to go along 5600 West over there on Axel Park and Leo Park Road. Is that true with your trucks going along that belt on 5600 West? Or Hadley Park Road, does it change the snake too?
Yeah, I'm not quite sure what you're referring to.
So if we go down 5600
You're talking about Holly Park Road.
Yeah, and it changes with the Hadley Park Road. And there's a couple intersections where the dips are extremely bad and the roads are in bad repair. For a normal vehicle over there, you have to drop down about five miles an hour. You have an issue with that with your trucks?
Yeah, to the south of, excuse me, to the north of the station, where it's a four-way, there are the the dips getting bigger by the day, but.
Yes, and I know it's been on the plan for at least three years for the city to repair those.
I just, I totally agree with talking about aesthetics and giving direction to staff, but we could spend all day on the 27th talking about individual projects that each of us know about. We need to give, as part of this goal thing, we need to give direction as to the look and the design criteria that the council agrees should be, and then let staff go to work around the city. Because I, you just don't wanna get bogged down on any of these topics more than just getting direction to state, so they can do it. Does everybody agree with that? And we could go on all night tonight talking about individual places that could be capital and capital project type things, so. I like the way we set it, entrance to the city and aesthetics. Let's let's try and give some real direction when we get to that item on strategic plan, and be exactly the look that we're trying to achieve, and then let the professionals take it from there and bring us back the project. Is that okay with that? And we can talk about individual projects or areas in the city that need work, and then a council name. I think what the staff really needs is real direction as to what we're thinking in as a council body. And so, is everyone okay with that? Cool. So we're still kinda back to number five. Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. Just wanted to mention one quick thing, and that was the ongoing problem that we have, which is transportation, particularly east-west. We know with Mountain View and with Bangor, we're seeing improvements which are coming. The dramatic change at 78th on Bangor, when we got that overpass, it literally opened up the city at that part, at that intersection. For example, in my life, I absolutely avoided the intersection, and now I drive through it twice a day, at least. And to me, seventy South used to be a barrier, now it's opened it up, and so I don't know if this particular strategic session is the time to do it, or if it's just one of those sub-bolts that I would like us to keep working on. But maybe it's even a little bit of having Dave Murphy involved in the capital projects, but as a council body, we should know where we need to be seeking regional, state, federal funding, so that we can get all of our roads up to where they need to be, rather than just kinda waiting for them to come in a hopper on the capital projects list. That's just just a generalized statement, I think it's really important, because we're in a city, the city's gonna come to a crawl here in the next couple of years, especially at 78th South, if it's coming up, 90th South. That's gonna be crazy on Bangor.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Mayor. I completely agree with councilmember Nichols. I think transportation, transportation projects should be one of our goals. I'd like to specifically, well, this year with the legislative session, we're focusing primarily on the airport. But next year, I'd like to start landing groundwork for what projects do we have that we want to push for funding on, get them laid out. We know that we're working on 7800 South and changing up the the traffic there to allow for bidirectional traffic. I think that's gonna be significant. I worried a little bit about timing with construction on Bangor, but I wanna make sure that we've got those figured out. 13th has languished for years and years and years, and some plans show 13th as a viable alternative type of I-15 or Redwood Road, which which it's not. I would like to go through a list of some of those projects. I know we've got the flyover as well, or 8600 South, that by Longwood Park. I'd like to go through that list of, that specific list of projects, maybe the top 10 transportation issues, and then see if we can't get everybody, city staff, lobbyists, focused on finding funds so we can knock those out, figure out what the best and most efficient way is to get those projects taken care of, because for, well, every one of us has run a campaign. Heard over and over and over, east-west traffic is the bane of most people's existence within within the city, so I I wholeheartedly agree with councilmember Nichols and would like to have that on there. I think that's something that we can have that list, those goals defined, clarified, have the plan made for the next year on how to proceed with those specific transportation projects. Thank you.
So is that what the majority of the council would like to have as a discussion item for number five? To really hone in again on the projects that we wanna do in the next year, in the next three years? I mean, don't remember, we got 90th South that repaired before we gave that to the UDOT, moved up three years. Those kinda things, I think that that'd be good to talk about and give staff that direction. This is what we want done next, this, wherever it lies in that capital project plan, we may have a different view than what the plan shows right now. That's under five, right? Infill development, I'm calling it, is first.
Economic development, something or other was in there as well. That may fall under, that may kind of include everything. That's kind of the overarching. That's the overall overwhelming.
Mayor?
Yes.
The only one that staff would like some direction on is the secondary water system. We had a dogging point show months ago, and there was no real direction to yes or no. If we could have a half hour or so as part of this, just to get that behind us, I'd appreciate it.
It will, and I think we can cover that right at the beginning of the water.
Thank you.
Done and over, Wes, and forgotten about.
We also should be leaving. We also, we also on the price tag.
Yeah, it's it's only because of the price tag. So on five, do we wanna try and, I mean, I'm in agreement that the transportation issue is probably even above the water issue, but economic development, giving this to the next level, there is also very important. Let's let's take ours, aren't that okay? And we'll just, it may be a long, maybe a long day, but it's just one. So we could, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to add something on economic development to generalize it. If you guys are on board with it, it more for staff to give them an idea what to help present us, and I just wanna present a question to them and say, what do you feel we need to do to propel economic development to the next next level? To support, I mean, is it, do we need financing, do we need staffing, do we need, whatever it is, I I'm just curious if the council's willing to do that. I'm willing to say, tell us what we need to do, because Dave Oka's the one who's talking to these people, and when they say, I really don't like West Jordan, and this is why, A, B, and C, well, Dave obviously has the answer of, this is what you need to do, council, because this is what I'm hearing. I I don't know if you guys would feel comfortable if I posed that question, but that's, to me, I think would be beneficial as a councilman, is when I when I hear them down, this is what I'm hearing, and this is what you need to do.
So on the final item, and I think specifically, just to add to that, is I believe there needs to be funding set aside for some of the things we've talked about. In order to court the type of businesses we want, in some cases, there has to be some goodwill, I guess, put out there, so. If you could be prepared for the final item of the day, to bring from your staff what you propose as being items you need, that'll be item number six on the, so, yes.
Thank you, Mayor. If we're also discussing the order of the items, I would suggest we change them up a little bit, so some of the ones are more finite in scope or right off the bat, and some of the others where we might spend a lot of time, might be moved further down. For example, I think transportation should be number one. Number two, I would put as a rec center and arts facility, I think that'll be a relatively quick conversation compared to water, which I would do number three. Infill development, number four. And then city aesthetics, I would do as number five, and then economic development, number six. I think that way we can get the items that are more refined and definitive, have a more sort of quantitative measurements associated with that, the yes, no, get those first, get them out of the way, and then the ones that are gonna be more artistic in approach, a little bit further down, so that we're not finding ourselves spending the entire time on one item and never making it through the others. Thank you.
Everybody okay with that order?
Yes.
Sounds good to me.
If we're at number one at noon, yes, please pull up the cable.
I would say I'm fine numbering that way or going in that order, as long as we recognize that that's a time thing, not a priority, what's more important, what's less important.
Plan on at least a 10-hour day. Seven thirty, yeah.
This one to be ready. What I wanted to ask is, did I have this one day, so decide, can we really focus and can we agendize these things and put time, timing on it? That's all I would ask.
I think if you do them at the six, and we go for a 10 to 12-hour day, I believe we can get it done. It's not new dinner, but we'll do breakfast in the morning, so. Yeah. Everyone okay with that? Alan, you had a comment? Oh, excuse me.
Thanks, Mayor. I was just gonna say, on on economic development, just to echo kinda what you did, and that is, you know, what are what are the things that are inhibiting us, if it's if it's not having enough people, if it's not having the tools that we need to to diminish those barriers? And then, like I said, what what can we do to to get in the second gear, third gear? I think we've got a good team, but I I really feel, just my short time being on the council and and my time being a resident and watching what's going on, I I really think that that's an emphasis for me. Thank you.
Anything else? Do you want, do we wanna start at seven? I think we could start at seven, and that'd be just fine, Eric.
Seven.
No.
Seven is early now.
Let's do seven. We'll start at seven.
Yeah, I won't be able to be there that early, so seven, I I've been planning on seven thirty. My wife and I have some medical issues.
Let's let's leave it at seven thirty, and we've had it scheduled like that for, so we'll just start at seven thirty. Go till we're done. Okay, I need a motion to move to closed session for the discussion of character, professional competence, or physical and mental health of an individual strategy session to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation, strategy sessions to discuss purchase, exchange, or lease of real property, including any form of a water right or water shares, adjourned from there. So, second, motion by councilmember Conahay, and the second by councilmember Jacob. Councilmember Anderson, discussion, see you on the floor.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Wal?
Yes.